Good evening. Today is Thursday, November the 17th, 2022. The time is now 6:30 PM. I will now call the regular meeting of the ISD 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to our lovely audience here tonight with us in person as well as those watching online. Director Said, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume, second. Second by Director Alt. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next, we will move on to the information portion of our meeting. And we are delighted to have a report about Nicolet Middle School and Eagle Ridge Middle School with Dr. Chris Belmont Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Franny Belker Becker with Nicolet Middle School Principal and Mr. David Helke, Eagle Ridge Middle School Principal with teachers and students.
Thank you for that introduction, Chair Chester. Good evening, Dr. Battle, Chair Chester, and the board. This is time two, right? This is episode two of our school reports for 2022-23 school year. And so it's my honor to be here with Eagle Ridge Principal Dave Helke and Nicolet Principal Franny Bakair, who will share a little bit about their 191 story and then their schools' 191 story. And then we'll have our students and some teachers here to share their story.
So you can tell, you can tell we put our years on there. So I guess we're starting with the younger, the younger school first. The younger school first, yes. So, good evening, Chair Chester, Superintendent Battle, and Board of Education members. It's so exciting to be here to share about Eagle Ridge and to share about our middle schools and 191. There's, I think, a lot of great work going on and a lot to be proud of. This first slide, we simply kind of show that obviously each of us are our own school community. And part of being a community is that we do rally behind some common expectations, some common language. At Eagle Ridge, that is FIRE, which stands for Focus Integrity Responsibility and Excellence. And we have some students here that later on will share a little bit about how we use that and how some of that's developed out even further in our classrooms. Eagle Ridge is the newer school. We've been around since 1995. And I believe that just like Nicolet, one of the things that stands out to me about our middle schools is the strong sense of community that they have. Hopefully, you'll get a bit of that this evening along with some other great things that are going on at the middle level.
All right, good morning, board. Not morning, oh my gosh, it's so long day, sorry. Good evening.
It's almost morning.
It is, almost morning again. So I will talk to you about Nicolet Middle School, which, there's Nicolet Middle School. The physical building has been around since 1970. But I would say the newest iteration of Nicolet Middle School just started two years ago with the closing of Metcalf Middle School, which created the new Nicolet Middle School. And that's where the Nicolet, Dr. Angie Paul, with staff and students at the time, created the new Phoenix logo. So I like, there's, I almost feel like there should be two dates on here in honor of Metcalf and that Nicolet is representing a deep and historical part of the district with Metcalf. So honoring Metcalf is here in spirit, too. So we are the Nicolet Phoenix, which they chose that because it is the merging of the two schools and when a phoenix rising and becomes something even more powerful and great. And behind that, they chose "rise" to go with. That is the common language that brings together the school is that we are resourceful, inclusive, safe, and we demonstrate excellence. So it is something that both middle schools have is we have these sort of core values that guide a lot of our social-emotional work within the building and how we help develop the culture.
So this next slide really is a nice, just a quick graphic that captures what we consider to be our foundation. So things that our middle-level programming are rooted in, you know, things that we are 150% committed to that we feel are really important to the success, not just of the school but the success of our students. So I'm going to just start in the upper left of the diagram and just touch base quickly on each of them. The first is student leadership. We really believe strongly that in middle school, we need to be providing our students opportunities to lead, providing our students some opportunities for their voice to be a part of the school. And some examples of that are WEB, which is a mentoring program that allows our upperclassmen, students, to help our sixth graders and mentor and support them as they, as they come into our middle school environment. And I think you might hear a little bit about the impact of WEB this evening. And then Student Council, obviously, as well. Another opportunity for students to be involved. And I know both Franny and I also are committed to other groups that, you know, patterned after some of the work at the high school and providing students those opportunities to meet in affinity-like groups as well. So that's, that's just a, again, one of those roots, a foundation of what we believe strongly in. Advisory, the middle level has a very structured advisory program. It includes, obviously, check-ins, but it includes second-step social-emotional curriculum. Also, really, a lot of work that happens with community building and just building and forming relationships. And then a bit of emphasis that starts in sixth grade and builds as you go to eighth grade with your college and career readiness. Avid, another strong root of the middle school program. Not only avid in terms of avid as a program for some students that are in avid classes that are getting a lot of the college and career readiness support, but avid in terms of avid's impact school-wide and avid strategies that are used across the curriculum and in all classes. Continuing our work as a school district with CPSS and really infusing that into the work that is done in the classrooms at the middle school level. One of the things that's occurring at both buildings is a book study that I think Franny will allude to a bit in the next slide. But our teams are focused on conversations that help them continue on their journey and help continue to build in aspects of CPSS into our, into our instruction. And then PBIS really is that first slide. That is the outgrowth of our PBIS efforts. Both buildings have PBIS committees. Both buildings have been taking active roles this year in really looking at the expectations and finding ways to grow that even more to build a stronger community. And then one of the things that we're excited about this year is the bringing back of many of the activities in the athletics. I think our middle school students are thirsting for things to do. And it's been a pleasure to see them have opportunities across sports and fine arts and academics. And so when we think about middle school, this is really who we are and these are the things that we spend our time on and that we value.
Continuing with our story, so we had our roots. And then I'm going to share a little bit about the middle school instructional framework. So we have a triangle here because I like to say the triangle is one of our strongest building shapes that you could have. So we wanted to create a framework for our students that was strong in supporting them as they continue on their journey of becoming, as I always tell the students at Nicolet, their best possible selves. So we, within our triangle, we have lots of triangles that make up the triangle. So it's not only is it a super-strong shape, we've made it up with other super-strong smaller shapes. So the first one that we have is when we work with staff and we design our systems, we're always thinking about our structure. What are the structures that we have in place? And specifically, we think to ourselves, what are the structures we have in place that promote culturally proficient school systems? There are things that we can do technically within our structure that put culturally proficient school systems at the forefront. There's also things that we can do within our structure that can set our buildings up to make "cell" be a priority, so the social-emotional learning of our students. So we always are having comments, comments, conversations about what is our structure? Is our structure supporting what we are saying? Going back to the slide that Dave was talking about, are our structures supporting the things that we are seeing are our roots? So we always have to keep that in mind when we talk about our framework. Then culturally proficient school systems, the district has been committed to our culturally proficient school systems journey. And so that is another very important part of our framework. Anytime we're talking about curriculum, we're talking about policy. We're, within our buildings, we're talking about PBIS. We're talking about social-emotional learning. We want to go back to culturally proficient school systems. How are we elevating the voices of all of our students? How are we making sure that they have opportunities to hear? How are we making sure that we are representing them throughout our whole system? And how are we providing scaffolds to support them? Those are questions that when we're doing our professional development, we're always having conversations with the staff about. And then finally, is culturally and historically responsive education. So with this one, this was, it was the piece, we had like a two-legged stool in middle school. And then Goldie Muhammad's book, Cultivating Genius, talks about culturally and historically responsive education. It became the missing piece of our triangle or the missing leg in our stool. And our stool became very, very sturdy when we added this piece in. And so Goldie Muhammad is a brilliant African-American scholar who has studied, studied education of Black literary groups that have existed like for years before, and their history was lost. And within these literary groups, they had practices or pursuits that they said, when you have these things in place, they help to, they help all your students learn, but they particularly help our students of color learn. And we call, she calls them the five pursuits. And the five pursuits are, and as I say, these five pursuits, students go, wow, they sound like they align perfectly with CPSS. And so her five pursuits are, how do we make sure identity is present in our lessons for students? How do we make sure that we are identifying skills? When we say the skills are the standards, we're always going back to the standards. But where she pushes us, and it connects with the work that we're doing with embedded honors, she's like, we don't want to stop at skill. How do we push our students for intellect? So intellect is how you use those skills. And the simplest way is like two plus two is a skill. You know, we know that that's four. But she pushes, she pushes us to think, we don't want to stop there with our students. How do we have them use that skill in everyday life? And that's where, when we start to talk about intellect, it brings into play our avid strategies because avid strategies are how we develop intellect for our students. And then the other, the fourth pursuit that she pushes us to think about is criticality. How are we teaching our students criticality? How are we teaching them to critically observe the world around them and to identify different, through a critical lens, different ways that oppression may exist within the world? And so these are ways, culturally, historically responsive education is a way that helps us to think about a broader way of designing our unit. So when we add in, we want to think about our structure of our unit. We want to think about culturally proficient school systems. And then you add in culturally, historically responsive education, we get a really incredibly strong support system and base for all of our middle school students. To help with this work, this year, all middle school teachers are reading Goldie Muhammad's Cultivating Genius book. And we are having lots of great conversations. Many teacher, I love when we come back from the books and many teachers are just talking. It affirms so much of the work that we've done as a district because it's given really concrete ideas for how to put CPSS into your unit planning, into your lesson planning. And then I forgot, the last pursuit of Goldie Muhammad, which I actually think is one of the most important pursuits, is joy. How do we make being a part of school a joyful experience? I think like all together are really important.
So the next slide just, I think, highlights some of our current work and gives a little insight into efforts that we're going to be putting in, forth, moving forward. And so pathways, 191 pathways. As you all know, we have a strong pathway program that was developed several years ago at the high school. And we went K-12 with that program a few years ago. And we know that at the middle school, there's a lot of things that we can build off of that we currently have and that we can align with the high school. And so that's really going to be a continuing effort, working and aligning with our high school partners and also working with our communications department to really highlight the work associated with pathways at the middle school. And along with the opportunities that students could have, continuing to find ways to utilize tools like Zello and other college and career tools most effectively and most efficiently at the middle school level. And then, let's talk about Avid.
So Nicolet Middle School will continue to pursue Avid National Demonstration School status. So on Tuesday, that's why I'm like so confused about the day of the week when I tell you what we did. On Tuesday, we had a Nicolet showcase, Avid Showcase Day. So we had over 50 educators from Minnesota. We had some people drive from Iowa, too, to come to Nicolet. And they spent three hours at Nicolet, learning about how we do Avid at Nicolet. And this is part of one of the things you agree to when you become a national demonstration school is that you will host showcase and you will let other schools come see how you implement Avid within your school. It was an absolutely phenomenal morning. Our teachers and staff were amazing. We got lots of emails of thank you from Avid National and from teachers who visited. We really demonstrated how you can bring together CPSS, equity work, and Avid to meet the needs of all your students. So people got to really see how avid, I always do my triangle, how avid exists within our secondary, or in middle school framework. So that is, we will be going forward with, it's called demo recertification. So Nicolet is in the phase of going forward with recertification for our demo status.
Another thing we're excited about at the middle level is launching into a middle-level evaluation. As most of you know, the, the structure of the middle school changed a few years ago and then the pandemic hit. And obviously, every structure changed for a while there. And so there's never really been an opportunity to really review and evaluate all the new things that were put into place. And so we're going to be working with Brandon Lowe and CISA and putting together a process to really review and evaluate everything that has been going on at the middle level. Obviously, with the intent that we want to continually improve and find those areas that we can learn from and grow. And so more to come on that. But we felt like it would be better to do more of a just comprehensive evaluation as opposed to whenever somebody maybe has something that they'd like us to look at or they want something, you know, that we piecemeal it together. And so the evaluation will include everything from, you know, how are classes scheduled to what are the offerings available for students? How are those offerings, are electives aligned to pathways at the high school? How does the schedule allow for things like special ed EL supports and things like that? Because it was a big transformation. And we want to, like I said, we want to, in the spirit of continuous improvement, have some type of a structured process to learn and grow and move forward.
And our last picture, it says honors and regular. And so an update on where we are with embedded honors. So embedded honors was born during COVID times. And then we continued with it last year. And then this year, Dave and I have made a commitment to strengthening how we move forward with embedded honors, which is one of the reasons behind the birth of the middle school instructional framework triangle because it was the missing piece for helping teachers to understand how embedded honors would play out. How do you create the unit for embedded honors? How do you create, how do you create that differentiation within your classroom? Dave and I have committed, I think we've probably done close to six, maybe eight hours of PD this year for embedded honors. We've given a large chunk of the professional development time to work with teachers on embedded honors. In addition to at middle school, we have weekly team time, which they're doing the book study, which supports embedded honors. And we just, where last year, we said if students wanted to be part of embedded honors, they would make the choice during class during that unit. A big change that we have done with embedded honors this year is we are reaching out to families and saying, are you honors interested for your student? And so a Google form went home for at conferences. So we talked with all of our teachers. Teachers did a lot of talking with parents at conferences about what embedded honors is. We had, I know at Nicolet Middle School, we had a large number of families fill out the Google form saying that they were honors interested. And we are getting that information to the teachers. The teachers have lesson plans in place for what would make something an honors credit as opposed to a grade-level credit. And they have done an absolutely excellent job. We've just, we've been laying the groundwork for years with our CPSS work that we've been doing and other professional development that we've done. And this Goldie Muhammad, going back to the culturally and historically relevant instruction, really was that missing piece that helped go, oh, okay, it's not as challenging as I thought it was going to be, as the teachers thought it was going to be. That framework, those five pursuits, made it seem a lot easier than what we were imagining. So we have many more students and families that are showing that they are interested in embedded honors this year. And we should be giving out quite a few more embedded honors checks on report cards.
So the, the leadership duet, these two are, this is not an act. They truly are working together to create really robust, predictable, and just affirming experiences for our middle-level students that is going to then just build towards the high school. And the fact that they were both high school leaders is an asset in this work. And I think you're going to continue to see it shaping in these stories. And speaking of stories, we'll kind of jump into some. So I get to go to the middle schools. What I'm learning is the middle schools are like an incubator of wonderment, right? Like students are coming in saying, what does the world think about me? What do I think about myself? Just, so finding experiences for them that help them interact with their identity, as Principal Bakair spoke of, is so important. So that middle-level sports is one onboarding opportunity that we're seeing happen in real time. So the principals are going to represent Amaya and Jabril's story. Some of our students could be here tonight, some couldn't.
Unfortunately, Amaya couldn't be with us because she is sick. I really wish I could have met her. It's such a great story about middle school sports. So Amaya has never picked up a tennis racket ever before in her life, maybe in gym. But like, she didn't remember. Never picked up a tennis racket and decided that she would go out for the girls' tennis team. Signed up for girl, came to open house, saw the sign up for girls' tennis. We have a phenomenal girls' tennis coach at Nicolet Middle School. Signed up for girls' tennis. And I would just see her every day. Where I stand at the end of the day is, if you know Nicolet, we call it the link. So that's my spot. Like every day, I would see her just so happy with her tennis racket on the way, you know, going through the link to go to the tennis courts to practice, talking with our tennis coach. She is like Amaya, she's like, she is absolutely amazing. And not, she was amazing at tennis. The thing was, she had never picked up a tennis racket, but she had a gift for tennis. It's like, what, what a joy that we were able to provide that for her with middle school sports because it's a sport she would have never done or would have ever thought about doing if it hadn't have been an opportunity in the fall. And so though she is looking forward to going to the high school and being part of the girls' high school tennis team. And the coach is just so excited to watch, to see where she goes with tennis. And it was all through this middle school sports experience.
Well, thank you. And Jabril, same way. I wish he could share the story. I did talk to his mom a bit ago and he's unable to join us. So Jabril is somebody who has a deep interest in engineering. And the middle schools have a Project Lead the Way curriculum. So students have an opportunity in sixth grade to take a quarter of it, in seventh grade to take a quarter of it. And Jabril actually took both electives in eighth grade this year. And what was interesting was when I was talking with him and we were kind of prepping for the board meeting, you know, we talked about, I knew he was interested in engineering. And I just said, you know, just share your passion, your interest, share what you like about the Project Lead the Way classes. And I started to make an assumption that, well, eighth grade, you know, probably not thinking a whole lot about what he wants to do. And I said, you know, you're eighth grade, you're young. I don't expect you to really know what you may want to do when you go to high school or beyond. And he looked at me and he goes, oh, no. He goes, I'm taking a bunch of these classes at high school and I think I'm going to go into software engineering or engineering in college. And I said, well, that's great. If you want to share that, go ahead. I didn't expect that. You know, but I think what it, what it reminds all of us is the impact that the middle school years can have and the impact that any of these experiences, whether they're classroom experiences or whether they're experiences outside of the classroom through athletics or other co-curriculars, really help kids either hone in on a passion they already have or maybe discover a new passion. And so that was, that was his story. And the part that really, like I said, inspired or re-inspired me was his excitement to talk about going to high school and beyond and how excited he is about engineering. So again, letting us know the importance of that.
Awesome. So dynamic school leaders, interested students, and then incredible teachers, right? So we have two teachers coming up to share a little bit about their story.
Thank you so much for having me. I'll be brief. My name is Lucius Elward. I currently work at Eagle Ridge Middle School. I'm so happy to be there. But my 191 journey started a bit before that. I started working with Dakota County Technical College, launching an upward bound program at the high school that is still running today. And it was a wonderful opportunity for me. I was newly licensed as a teacher, not using my license. But I was working at the high school and I got to meet the students that were there, got to see some of their families and learn a lot about the populations that we are so proud to serve in this district. And that really helped me get my foot in the door here. And I'm so glad I did that because as much as I was having a lot of fun seeing what the high school offered, I really wanted to use my license. I wanted to use my teaching license. And I knew that I belonged at the middle school level. So that is where I went. I applied for a job at Eagle Ridge and was shocked and delighted that I was hired. I believe what I said to Mr. Leek. I believe what I said to Mr. Leek was, when he offered me the job over the phone, was, really? Because there were so many other wonderful candidates available, and I was a first-year teacher. I think what helped me get the job was in part knowing a little bit about the populations that we have in this district. And I've been there ever since. This is my ninth year now. I really love working at Eagle Ridge, I won't lie to you. It's a middle school, there are ups and downs, there's emotions. But it's so wonderful, and the students are so energizing. And when you've been doing the same thing for a few years, I know my educational career is not as long as some, sometimes I think there's the risk of stagnation. And there's this question of what keeps you going, what ignites you, what inspires you. And it's already kind of been mentioned here, but I'd say our focus on professional development and keeping things fresh and learning, and a big part of that is Avid, that has helped me stay invigorated and strengthened to keep going. Avid, I've been on the Avid site team, I think, since 2014. It's been a minute, but it's been so great for my teaching. They have this acronym, WICR, Writing Inquiry Collaboration Organization and Reading. And that is just something that is so important to build into each of one of my lessons, so that my students stay engaged, that my students are tapping into different modalities, different intelligences, and truly learning. And that, to get back to the students then, I think is the most specific focus that I can offer you. Right now, we're doing tutorials in Avid. And if you don't know what those are, those are really small groups where they have a tutor from the community come in, and students bring a point of confusion from their other classes and get support on it with their peers. And that inspires me, because these students are doing public speaking, which is horrifying, but on a small scale. And they, not only are they doing public speaking, but they're admitting a vulnerability, they're admitting a point of confusion, they're admitting they don't know always what they're doing. And they're saying this to their peers, and they're so desperate to impress. And that, I think, is really inspirational. And it strives, it makes me want to strive to keep improving my practice and keeping the best teacher I can be for them. So that is my 191 story, and I am so happy to be here. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you.
Thank you, Lucius.
I can go next. Hello, my name is Hawa Salad. So I prepared something because I'm an ELA teacher, and I thought this was what I was supposed to do. So I have a little story that I wanted to share with you. All of you can bear with me. I have a little iPad that I'm reading from. So my name is Hawa Salad. I'm an ELA teacher, seventh grade ELA teacher, and also an Avid teacher at Nicollet Middle School. I now introduce myself this way, but in the past, I would introduce myself as Hawa Salad the Reader or Hawa Salad the Book Lover. That is the first thing that I wanted people to know about me. Before I became a teacher in this district, I was actually a student in this district for about seven years. This is my fourth year working in this district, but there's history there. So I first came to this district in the fifth grade, but I also came to this country in the fifth grade. I first came to Sutrel Elementary School, and I realized that I was a little bit behind the rest of my classmates, not knowing the language, not understanding the culture. I had a lot of catching up to do. And so the first thing my dad and I did was pick up a book. I needed to catch up, I needed to get back and be able to do the same things my classmates were doing at my grade level. Therefore, I needed to pick up a book. My dad also encouraged me to also read at home as well. And so I started reading with picture books, and eventually I started getting into the Goosebumps series. And finally, I graduated to my own grade level books. With that, a book lover was born. And luckily, I was able to work with some of the best people I've ever met, Mr. Barton and Mrs. Istis at Sutrel Elementary School. And they also helped me become a lover of learning and also a lover of writing. In middle school, I was also really lucky enough to participate in the STEM program at Metcalf Middle School. And I was, I had some incredible teachers such as Mrs. Pranchke, Mr. Orth, and Mrs. Born. And they kept me engaged, and they pushed me to be the best possible, to be my best possible self. Being part of the STEM program also allowed me to meet some incredible peers, but it also allowed me to get into some honors programs in the Burnsville High School. My love for reading only grew when I got to the high school, to the point where it actually became a problem. I would be at the library more than I was in classes at some points, but it was totally acceptable. The library became my sanctuary, it was the place where I hid. It was basically like a hospital for me, because it just made me feel better. And I would be in there for hours. However, to be perfectly honest, I think the library was my favorite part of the high school experience. I spent about two years in high school, two years being 10th grade and 11th grade. This was before the high school became nine, 10, 11, and 12. I only spent 10th and 11th grade in the high school before I got into the PSEO program in my senior year of high school, because I was just ready to get out of there. I was ready for college, I knew that I was ready for college. I was mentally mature, a little bit more mature than some of my classmates. And so I talked to my guidance counselors, and they knew that I was ready, I knew that I was ready, so I got out of there. I went to Normandale Community College for my senior year, and I unfortunately did not get to read as much. Once you get into college, it's college, and it's very serious. And so my love for reading kind of took a hit. My love for books got hit, actually, by two things. Number one was college, and because of all the books that I was assigned to read in college, I was no longer able to read for fun. I didn't have enough energy, I didn't have enough time, and you know, being in college, it's a lot of work. Another hit that my love for reading got was also the lack of representation that I found in a lot of the books that I read. I was not able to find main characters that looked like me or had the same experiences as me, and so reading became less fun for me. Slowly but surely, my love for reading diminished. After graduating from high school, I attended Hamlin University, where I became an English major and I also became an education major. So this whole time, I've been talking about how a book lover, right? So the education major makes a little bit less sense. However, I decided to become a teacher in middle school, when I experienced a couple of my own teachers, and I realized how much it changed my day, just having one teacher check up on me, or how much I looked forward to class when I really liked the teacher, or how well I did in class when I really liked the teacher. I also realized, and I don't know what was going through my brain at 15, but I also realized that I looked around the school, and I thought I needed some people in my own school as well who looked like me. And I thought students my age would probably need the same thing as well. So becoming a teacher for me just made sense. Choosing to come back to teach at this district was the thing that made the most sense for me personally. So I live in this district, and when I actually got assigned a student teaching position here at Nicollet Middle School, I was incredibly excited because I would not have to drive really far during Minnesota winters. I'm serious, that was definitely my first thing. But my second thing that made me really excited was I found out that my coordinating teacher would be Heather Nemeth, and she is an incredible human being. And as soon as I met her, I was blessed and incredibly happy to be able to work with her. I also wanted to be a teacher for many different things, and I finally was able to come back into the district to help the students like me, who are now growing up in this district, such as like 13-year-old Hawa. And I would be able to cultivate the love for reading and the book lovers in my own building where I consider home, and I'd be able to go back to that district. That was another reason why I chose the district. It was winter, and then it was also because I really liked the feeling of home as well. I'm lucky enough to finally be able to make some of these changes happen. This is my first year, and I'm able to participate in a curriculum review for the first time in my life. I'm really, really excited to be able to add some great changes to our seventh grade curriculum, some books with awesome, awesome characters of color with different representation, culturally aware curriculum that will be able to have our students see themselves, a lot of that identity, a lot of that joy that is born for me, that was born in the books, I would like to cultivate it, I would like to bring it into a lot of my students as well. And therefore, I'm really excited to be able to participate in this curriculum review. Although there has been a little bit of pushback, I am still very much looking forward to fighting for my students, because I know how much it is worth it to be able to see yourself represented in the classroom, to be able to read about yourself, to be able to hear a voice that is very similar to your own and shares a lot of your experiences. I'm also really happy to report that my love for reading is excellent. Once again, my relationship with books is great. Just this past summer, I finished about 15 books, it was lovely. And also, to help the rise of the new generation of book lovers, I'm looking forward to a lot of the different changes that we're going to be able to create in the seventh grade curriculum this year. This district is my chosen home, and I'm very much looking forward to the bright future ahead, and also to be part of that bright future as well. Thank you for listening to my story.
Thank you. So two teachers whose 191, thank you so much, whose 191 journey started one way and is now, they're molding and they're helping so many 191 students at this time. So thank you so much to them. Next, we will invite our principals back. I'll slide over. We're going to lean into that horrifying public speaking that Mr. Elward mentioned. Here you go. Oh, here we go. So I think Everett, we'll start with you, just sharing a little bit, and then we'll kind of go down the list. Or should we, you know what, we don't need to follow the slide. Arturo, would you go first, just sharing a little bit about who you are and what your story is?
Yes. So my name is Arturo Chavez Garcia. I go to Eagle Ridge Middle School, and I participated in school soccer for Eagle Ridge Boys Team.
What did you like best about participating on that soccer team?
That it was, I think, I kind of forgot, because it was like a long time ago, but it was really fun, I enjoyed it, I made new friends there, and we worked hard.
Who's your favorite teacher at Eagle Ridge?
Hmm.
So many to pick from.
Yeah, there's a lot of teachers. Class would be, hmm, science.
Thank you, Arturo. Elliot?
Hi, I'm Elliot Lundee. I'm in sixth grade from Eagle Ridge. And I'm on the Burnsville High School mountain bike team. And something I enjoy on there is everyone's very inclusive, and they make sure to involve you, and the coaches and people who are involved are really nice. And you meet a lot of new friends.
Who's your favorite teacher right now? And what was last?
My favorite teacher would be Ms. Lou or Ms. Lewandowski. She teaches math for me. Yep.
Hi, my name is Everett. Something I really, really enjoy about school is being a web leader and helping the new sixth graders out. I helped out on orientation night and the first day of school for them, and kind of got them like acclimated to the school. My favorite subject is probably, I really like ELA and math. Math is my favorite. I love math.
Thank you, Everett.
My name is Renee Bolton. I go to Eagle Ridge Middle School in sixth grade, and the active activity I participate in is student council.
Your favorite class right now?
Either ELA or math.
Thank you, students. Thank you for being here tonight. Welcome to go have a seat back. Call up Principal Bakir and Mr. Helkey, thanks again for this.
We're changing.
I'm so bored. Thank you for that. As you can see, lots of passion in middle school, impossible to bottle up. That does conclude our school report.
Great. Thank you so much. It's such a highlight to have this come back to our board meetings. I think we missed it significantly in these last two years. So thank you, especially to our teachers and our students. I don't know if I, I can only speak for myself, but maybe the other board members will agree with me. The nervousness of public speaking continues, like my hands sweat nervously before the start of every board meeting. But no, thank you very much. I'll open it up for comments, questions.
I don't have a lot to add to what you just said. It was amazing. It was, hearing so many positive things about our middle schools is very heartening for me. I know we've always had our fair share of challenges, as most middle schools do, and I feel very good about what I'm hearing here tonight. And it makes me very hopeful for the future of continuing to build and strengthen what the work, the good work that you all are doing in our middle schools. So thank you.
Director?
Thank you, Chair Chester. Yes, I want to first thank the students. It's not easy, speaking, doing public speaking. You guys did awesome. You should be really proud of yourselves. You and your classmates do so much to really bring our work to life. And as Director Hume mentioned, you know, hearing what you're really enjoying about school is just, it's heartwarming. And I particularly appreciate knowing that the addition of the activities and athletics back to middle school, as we had hoped, would be embraced. And, you know, actually, personal story, I remember one, it was a chilly Saturday morning, the biking team was doing laps up and down, I live on a steep hill, going up and down, and up and down, and up and down. And, you know, really worked hard, so really appreciated that. For the adults, just a couple questions and comments. You know, I, Principal Bakir, hearing you speak about embedded honors, you know, it just brings me back to all those conversations when we were talking about transitioning from junior high to middle school, and how far we've come. And that, you know, the embedded honors and that option, opening it up to families to say, yes, we're interested in this for our student. And it's not defined by a cutoff score or anything like that. It really is going to equalize and make it equitableize, if that's even a word, make things much more equitable for our students, because of course, we want all of our students to dive into more rigorous classwork when they get to the high school, and this is really going to help with that. And I guess, just a question for you both, Principal Helkey and Principal Bakir, which Dr. Belmont, you had alluded to earlier, your experience at the high school, I'm sure, is, you know, and with the pathways and working with students, is a great way to backfill for our middle schools, right, in your new positions?
Yeah, it was interesting. I told somebody this summer that I think we're quite unique as a district to have two principals at the middle school that have very direct high school experience. And not only because it gives us, I mean, we understand where our students are going, but I think it also allows us to participate almost in a different way with our high school colleagues and conversations when we talk about things like embedded honors and preparing students for more rigorous coursework. So it's, I mean, it's a joy to have a colleague who comes from where I come from, but I think, you know, we both agree that I think it has brought a richness to the conversations at the secondary level that I don't think every district gets to have.
I would agree with that. I think I also bring the unique experience of my time as coordinator of secondary instruction. So I also understand instruction from the 612 lens, having had the wonderful opportunity to work with the middle school teachers and the high school teachers. And the Nicollet teachers would tell you, I'm highly passionate about embedded honors and what it means for all of our students when they go to the high school. We've had a lot of conversations about my passion for our need for it and helping all students understand, because we really never know when somebody is going to blossom. So embedded honors lets every student blossom at the rate that they can blossom at or in the subject they can blossom. And I will add one thing about embedded honors that I thought was so exciting that we put in. Thank you to Rachel Lucius from CISA. She really pushed us to put embedded honors into every subject. And we do have embedded honors in every subject, and I will say, our art teachers and our band teachers jumped on it. They said, absolutely, we want to have embedded honors. And they figured out a way to differentiate. And I felt, on the signup sheet, I loved it. I had a family that said, we are honors interested in art. And at that moment, it just made it all worth it. I said, this is why we put it in for every subject, because if that family and that student feels like that is where they can shine and where they can blossom, we have just given them that opportunity for us to recognize that in middle school. And what will be the effects of that in the future of the students?
Awesome. Thank you all for your work. I really appreciate it.
Just one thing, hearing everyone speak tonight, I just kept thinking of the word spark. And that, to me, is just, we're on the right path, because each and every one of you are sparking so much in little minds, and it's just beautiful. And to be a former student here and just to see all this, it's a beautiful thing. And I'm just so proud of all the work that you guys are putting in, and just seeing the alignment in our students. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Next on our agenda, we'll be hearing from the World's Best Workforce Achievement and Integration Progress Report with Amina Oftedal, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Such hard, hard to follow.
I always have to follow students. Just going to say, remember last time?
I'll put you third on the agenda next time, so there's something else between you.
Well, Director Chester, Superintendent Battle, members of the board, um, I do thank you for giving me this opportunity to share the annual report for the 2021, 2022 World's Best Workforce and Achievement Integration Plans. Uh, this evening, I'll provide an overview of the purpose and intent of both of the State of Minnesota World's Best Workforce and Achievement Integration Programs. Next, I will discuss the results of each goal for last year. And finally, I will outline the programming and strategies to place in, um, and strategies in place to address this year's goals. Uh, this report combines the progress of two programs, World's Best Workforce, which are the five key areas that demonstrate the path of a successful Minnesota student from kindergarten readiness to graduation. Achievement Integration, which is a state funded program with the intent of pursuing racial and economic integration, student achievement, equitable opportunities, and reducing academic disparities. In some instances, the goals of the two programs intersect, and in others, the goals address separate elements unique to their purposes. I'll start with kindergarten readiness. Incoming kindergarteners are assessed for their readiness for kindergarten in many domains, um, including early literacy, but also their social skills, communication, physical development, creative thinking. And for the World's Best Workforce and Achievement Integration, we needed to find a, a point of data to, to be able to work from. Last year, the focus moved from one singular measure, which was, uh, that we've been using in the past, which was just letter names, uh, to a composite of four measures of pre-reading skills. Um, the assessment is called early reading and it comes from our FastBridge, uh, um, group of assessments. It includes the concepts of print, how well students recognize, uh, actually how print functions on the page, um, beginning word sounds or onset sounds, letter names and letter sounds. So using these four foundational, uh, um, reading, uh, uh, skills, uh, they are rolled into a composite, which indicates readiness for, uh, reading learning. Individually administered to each learner, um, it is a broader look at the readiness for literacy instruction. Last year, only 32% of incoming kindergarteners met that benchmark, um, for the composite. Whereas this fall, 46% of kindergarteners met that benchmark. Um, while this is not meeting the goal of 55%, this was a dramatic increase within one year. Um, the gains can also be seen in the Achievement Integration Goals, which focusing, which focus on our students of color, with our BIPOC learners exceeding the goal of 33% with a showing of 35% meeting the benchmark, up from 28% last year. Smaller gains were seen with our native and indigenous students and Latino students. Um, from a broader perspective, um, you can see that there were gains, um, on, in all student groups on this kindergarten readiness measure. So the early reading, uh, measure. The focused work of the district and community preschool programs moving out of the pandemic and offering more opportunities for face-to-face preschool, uh, learning, uh, I believe contributed to these gains. When I shared this, uh, particular data with our pre-K and K educators, um, the only thing they could say was, this is, this is an area for us to celebrate. And to see the dramatic gains for some of our students, including our Black or African-American students, from 35% of incoming kindergarteners meeting the benchmark to 68% of those students meeting the benchmark as incoming kindergarteners. I think that that's just a really tremendous gain, um, knowing that, uh, our students are seeing those gains, um, for all students, 32 to 46. Um, and I think that the continued work that we're doing, um, with Foundations of Literacy will help, uh, bridge that gap that we'll be seeing a little bit later on. So just wanted to celebrate that particular one. For the World's Best Workforce, the, the next goal is reading proficient at grade three. Um, the goal was 65.8%. Um, however, uh, we did, uh, not see much more than, uh, half a percent gain here, a little bit less than that, from 34% to 35%. So really a small gain there. However, we were pleased to see that the participation levels increased back up to over 90%. And we feel as though that's going to be very representative for us moving forward. Um, I think our, our lack of gains, um, also reflect the same lack of gains that they saw statewide. And I think part of it is, uh, just reflecting on our grade three students, are the students who are coming off of first and second grade, deep foundational literacy during the pandemic and hybrid learning. This data on this slide indicates the work of equity that we need to, uh, continue in our schools with our disparities continuing in third grade based on ethnicity and participation in our multilingual instruction. Especially, uh, students receiving special education services and eligibility for free and reduced meal programs. And so those disparities continue to show themselves. Um, and I think they reflect also, uh, groups of students whose, uh, families were deeply impacted by the pandemic. Knowing that now we are continuing to do kind of, uh, robust instruction to, to accelerate the learning for these students. Um, if we expand the look at performance disparities, uh, from just grade three learners to all learners in grades three through 10 who participated in the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment, um, uh, we did not, uh, recognize any significant progress toward the goal of reducing the disparities between our students of color and our white learners, our BIPOC and our white learners. Um, this mirrors the struggle across the state. Um, and again, I feel as though, um, while you could see that there was just a small, very small decrease, um, our goal is really 18% and wanting to significantly reduce that gap. However, we did see a significant, uh, reduction in the disparities between students who were eligible for free and reduced lunch programs and students who were not eligible for free and reduced lunch programs. And so, uh, moving from a disparity in 2019 of 31% to an, seeing that significant increase of 39, 40% disparity between those two groups, reduced in 2022 to 26.9%. That, that's, I mean, that's a significant, uh, reduction in that disparity. And I think, again, really trying to reach out and, um, see how, um, what's been effective and what's been, uh, working to, uh, really connect with those families and provide. I, I don't have any significant data to support this, but I want to say that there is beginning for us to see the data that our expanded summer school, uh, programming has made a true difference on, uh, closing some of those disparities for our students. And the accessibility, the support of the federal ARP ESSR funds, um, making expanded summer programming possible for more and more and more students. Um, I think, uh, we can see that as part of our, our strategies to, uh, do some of that recovery for our kids. If we look at the, at, uh, the breakdown for the performance gaps for each of our students in reading, uh, each of our student groups, we see that, uh, in comparison to the state last spring, um, we, they're, we're performing at about the same level as the state of Minnesota, um, both in our, uh, ethnicity and in our, uh, gaps for, uh, multilingual learners, those receiving special ed services and those eligible for free and reduced lunch programs. For our college and career readiness, the indicator that we use, uh, at this time is, uh, looking at our ACT composite scores. Um, looking at the four-year trend for the a, uh, average ACT composite score, um, we saw no, uh, growth in the district average, average composite scores. Um, but we did not experience the same level of loss as the rest of the state. So we kind of held steady while the state, uh, saw a drop. The final, uh, of the five indicators for the World's Best Workforce is that all students graduate. The standing goal across the state is 90%. For our Burnsville High School students, uh, all the students across the board, uh, we're making our gains back, uh, with an 86%. Not necessarily a significant trend, uh, up, but it is moving in the right direction, back to, um, our 18 to 19 levels. Um, very anxious to look, uh, this spring at what our final results were for the classes of 2022. Um, along with our four-year graduation rates, this graph shows you the comparison. Uh, the blue is statewide, red represents, uh, Burnsville High School, and the green represents, uh, Burnsville Alternative High School. Burnsville Alternative High School lags behind in the four-year graduation rate by the very nature of the type of learners it serves, um, who are not only there for an alternative setting, but also as a significant source of credit recovery. Um, they do continue to regain their, their, um, their prior levels, graduation rates, uh, and regain that ground for their five and six-year rates. Um, for our achievement integration, uh, looking and drilling down into our graduation data, um, looking at this three-year trend, we are able to see some significant gains for some of our students. Um, the four-year graduation rate for some of our BIPOC learners, um, our Black or African-American learners exceeded their planned goal of 85% to, uh, show a graduation rate of 91% for that particular group, which is, um, exceeding, um, all expectations. And it, I think it's really a, a support, um, for the class of 2021. Our Latino students, while not, uh, making back all of their gains to 2019, did, uh, increase from 60 to 66%, which is significant as well. And, um, we also show some consist, some consistent increases for, um, our native and indigenous learners as well. So using the data from the World's Best Workforce Achievement Integration and multiple other data sources, um, programming for curriculum, instruction, and professional development are currently in progress. It's my plan to utilize each of the scheduled perform, uh, student performance and achievement or SPA reports, um, scheduled this year to provide the board with a comprehensive view of the programming and strategies that are being implemented this year. Each SPA report will focus on the World's Best Workforce goal and give you a chance to hear from the educators and students working in each of the areas, um, and sharing the process and progress of the strategies. January, we will give you the opportunity to see the work being done to strengthen the readiness and transition from preschool to kindergarten through our grade, um, um, and the powerful primary literacy program, which is our grade one phonemic awareness pilot, which, um, the preliminary data is looking very, very pleasing, um, as we expanded that pilot this year. Um, our pre-K K Alignment Task Force, uh, has been meeting and we'll have some great things to share with you in January about how they plan to, uh, improve the transition from preschool to, uh, kindergarten and create that as, uh, and as, as an aligned instruction. And finally, the programming for early learning. Uh, in March, uh, it will be a chance to discuss the impacts of Avid Schoolwide, which were demonstrated so amazingly on Tuesday at the Nicollet Showcase. It was, it was incredible and I was so proud of the students and the, um, the level of critical thinking and discussion. Um, the, the variety of style from the teachers implementing all of those, um, strategies. It, it was really, really fantastic. I was so proud. Um, but to share how that looks in our other sites as well. And examine the enrollment and performance of students participating in college credit-bearing courses at the high school. Um, and looking at how that coursework, uh, appears for all of our students in grade nine through 12. In April, we'll look at, uh, strategies and work being done to reduce the disparities of opportunity and performance with the recommendations of the Multilingual Program Review Steering Committee. We've been working very, very hard and we'll be able to look at their recommendations. Um, the highlights of our K-8 math implementation over the past three years, we've been working on middle school math. And this will be our first full, full year of implementation of our elementary math, which is very, very exciting. Just to see the changes and the shifts in the way that instruction aligns with our CPSS classroom instruction indicators. And being able to share some of that work, which is being done at a very high level with our principals. You, uh, saw that demonstrated by, uh, Principal Bakker and, uh, Principal Helkey today of the foundations of building their, their, uh, middle school programming. And, um, we'll be able to demonstrate that in all of our sites. Um, and then as a recap, in May of our spring assessments, we'll look at the alignment and refinement of the literacy steering committee to address the continuous improvements of our literacy curriculum. As you know, this is a curriculum we've been using since 2017. And, uh, in the spirit of, and, um, obligation of continuous improvement, uh, the work towards foundational literacy and the alignment that these folks are doing as a way of also, uh, accelerating learning through the COVID recovery. It'll also be a chance to share what reading and literacy support looks like once students move, um, to middle and high school and be able to share with you what that reading instructional support program looks like as well. So, um, rather than, uh, you know, just stopping at naming all of these particular things, I'm very excited to bring the educators to you to share their progress in each of these particular areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, open it up to questions, comments?
Director Hume?
And one, the, the earlier slides, you were talking about kindergarten readiness and some pretty encouraging growth from last fall to this fall. I'm curious how, if you have a sense of how it compare, how like this fall would compare to pre-COVID kindergarteners? Are we starting to catch up?
Um, I think it's difficult to say because we weren't using these particular measures. Um, I will-
That's a little bit apples to oranges, I realize.
It is a little apples to oranges. However, I do know that as our voluntary, uh, preschool program, our VPK program increases the number of students that it serves, um, this year, I think we have close to 300 students who, out of a class of 600 anticipated for next year, are participating in district preschool. Um, not to mention all of the students who are participating in community, um, preschool as well. Um, I think what we're seeing is, is really families, really, uh, engaging in that preschool education and supporting their children, um, wanting them to be ready to enter into school. And so I'm not sure that, um, I can even make that comparison, just simply because we did not have the, that kind of enrollment in preschool that we had seen before. And making that available to so many of our, of our families, um, who wouldn't normally have access to preschool because of barriers of cost.
And maybe that's the more important point, that the more of those opportunities we provide to our preschoolers, the more prepared they're going to be for kindergarten when that day comes.
Yes. Being able to support them, uh, the Achievement Integration Program supports, um, our voluntary pre-K through, uh, supporting transportation costs for, um, our students to, and so avoiding that barrier for, for families. But, um, and I, and I can't say enough for the community ed program and the support that those folks are providing, um, and delivering that, that preschool experience at the elementary sites. So I think there's some really strong connections.
It's such a great program. Thank you.
It's really wonderful. Thanks.
Director?
Thank you, Chair Chester. Um, so a thought to share, um, and then a couple of questions. I know that, you know, in education, we often are led to talk about gaps, right? And I guess, um, I'm wondering if it wouldn't be more apt for us to use more of an underserved, you know, we are under-serving students based on these results as opposed to there being gaps. And, you know, taking ownership for that. Um, so that was one thought that I had. Um, and we definitely have, um, things to celebrate in this report. I mean, the, the improvements that you pointed out on, on the one slide, um, across all groups. You know, it's, it's great to see that growth, particularly coming out of the pandemic. You know, people are, we know our staff and, uh, are working really hard to try to make sure that we're bringing kids back to, you know, where we want, where, where they, they can be. Though, not to be a downer, but at the same time, you know, looking across the different indicators, across the different slides, I can't help but notice that our Latinx students are consistently underserved. And I'm wondering, what else do we need to do? What else is needed to help our Latinx students have the same success and outcomes that we're seeing, for example, in our Black and African-American students?
I think that continues to be an area because we see them, we see that the opportunities for them to succeed are really, we're really struggling with making those available to those students, especially our multilingual students. And we have seen an increase in the number of multilingual students in our district over these last few years, especially those from Spanish-speaking cultures. And I think that's part of the focus for our multilingual program review. What are the ways that we're supporting those students, not only in their English language development, but in their access to content in the classrooms? And so, we've had the luxury of being able to shepherd two full cohorts of teachers across the district through their PSYOP training over the last two years, and then continuing to focus on what other supports and what other ways are we utilizing our resources to serve our students. I think there continues to be some questions about how are we looking at the language barriers for family engagement as well? And knowing that we have an intensely supportive and passionate group of cultural liaisons who speak Spanish and advocate for Spanish-speaking families, there still continues to be some spaces there that are unfilled and some needs that need to be addressed.
Well, and I also, you know, thinking back to Stacy Solvine's enrollment report, he mentioned that in contrast to past years where we had, you know, new arrivals in our schools that tended to be more at the secondary level, now we're seeing more in the elementary, which I think is playing itself out here as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to have a report about the twenty-three legislative platform. Before we start, there's, I need to make more public that there's been an error in reporting that has not maybe been rectified and misunderstanding in the community about the legislative exemption that this district is seeking. I think there was a misprint in the newspaper indicating that the legislative exemption that we're seeking is that all sales would not go to debt first, that we were seeking to use all of the revenue proceeds to have more flexibility. That is not the case. That is an error and not true. What we are obligated to do is pay off any debt from a sale first, and that the legislative exemption that we are seeking is for any proceed after debt is paid to have more flexibility for the district to use. On that note, we pass it off to Vice Chair Scott Hume, who is our Chair of the Legislative Committee.
Thank you for that clarification, so I didn't have to. So, the Legislative Committee met in October, and then at our last board meeting, we had a workshop where we discussed the proposed one ninety-one legislative platform for two thousand and twenty-three. We agreed on six or something, seven items that we're including in our platform this year. What we're proposing is that we're asking our legislative leaders at the state legislature and in Congress to support our district by helping to reduce the cross-subsidy for special education and English learner funding, providing the legislative exemption that Chair Chester just referred to to allow more local control over property sale proceeds after the debt is paid.
After debt.
Remove a fifteen-day residency requirement for students enrolled in our online schools to ensure that our students are able to continue to be in our virtual academy if they are not in the state for a certain amount of time. Increase safe schools funding to expand mental health supports. Provide targeted funding to increase diversity among teachers. Make funding for voluntary pre-kindergarten permanent, and increase access to school-based pre-kindergarten programs, which connects what we just talked about with Director Oftedal. And continue Medicaid eligibility as a means of direct certification for a student to receive free school meals. So, those are the one ninety-one specific legislative priorities that this board has identified and that we'll be including in our legislative platform once approved and finalized. We'll be sharing with our legislators in the coming weeks and months.
Thank you, Director Hume.
That concludes my report, unless there are questions.
Any other, or remember, comments, questions? And I'm personally excited about our proposed, hopefully to be passed legislative.
Third time's the charm.
Platform, and meeting and working with our legislators as well in educating them about the needs of our districts. So, thank you Legislative Committee for drafting this and bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Next, we will have a report about enrollment calls with Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent, and Erin Tinklinberg, Director of Communications.
Thank you, Chair Chester and members of the board. Tonight, Erin Tinklinberg and I will provide some information based on your request for us to bring forward some recommendations about enrollment goals. Tonight, we'll set out considerations, some background information, refresh the public and from the enrollment report you received at the last board meeting, which gives us a baseline to set our SMART goals for enrollment. Then we'll review the draft goals that we have, and then we'll open it up to questions you may have. So, I'll turn it over to Erin to kind of give the background and some considerations and context.
All right. Thank you, Chair Chester, Dr. Battle, and members of the board. Yeah, I'm just going to share a little bit of background and some of the considerations and context that went into our thoughts around developing these draft goals. So, again, the intention is to set specific enrollment-related goals as part of the proposed strategic dashboard, which the board has seen drafts of the dashboard. And these enrollment goals would fall under all four of the district's strategic directions. So, the board saw this, I think, in September, just a draft concept of what our dashboard would look like, the things that we're measuring to see if we're making progress towards our vision, and enrollment at the bottom kind of covering all four of the strategic directions. So, these goals would be part of that dashboard. So, things to consider as we're setting the goals, things we talked about were some things that are out of our control, like birth rates, of course, in the community, and move-in-and-out trends, though obviously we'd love for people to be moving in to choose our school district. Another consideration is that birth rates have been lower during the pandemic. So, three, four, and five years from now, we should be thinking about what the kindergarten class sizes would look like, and that the goals should reflect some of the driving factors that are under our control, particularly the student and family experience, that that's what we should be focused on. So, again, things that we consider as we're setting these, we should, of course, be looking at our current reality as Dr. Battle mentioned in the enrollment report that the board received last week, understanding that both experience and reputation play a role in a family's choice where to have their children attend school. We'll look at our past research and survey results, and then, of course, things that we find out in the future as we continue to do this. We are developing and will be rolling out an exit survey for families as well that are leaving the district so that we can hear about what their experience was like and what we might learn from that. And so, when we talk about student and family experience, these are just a few of the things that we have been doing or kind of think of as defining that experience, contributing to that experience. I won't necessarily read through them. They're all things that you're pretty well familiar with and things that we promote as strengths of the district as well, so.
And as I mentioned, we now have baseline data. As at the last board meeting, you received the enrollment report. Our enrollment is nearly flat from October first from last year to this year. Grades K-12, we are about thirty students below last year's number. The next slide shows the student enrollment in and also student enrollment out. The trend does continue that we have many more students enrolling out of our district than coming into our district. And then the next slide gives you enrollment at our elementary schools. We do have an increase at four schools, Harriet Bishop, Hidden Valley, Sky Oaks, and William Burn. We had a significant drop in VA Elementary, but happy to report most of those students came to in-person learning. The next slide really shows the secondary data for seat counts, grade six to twelve. Next, we move to the two enrollment goals. Based on the data that we lose students once they enter in and they enroll out, we are setting as one draft goal is a cohort goal. So, each grade-level cohort will remain stable, and we believe stable is within two percent from year to year. And so, an example, if we have first grade enrollment is six hundred students this year, we would expect that five hundred and eighty-eight students would continue on to second grade. The second goal is related to market rate, our market share. Just a reminder, previously, we did share data about our county datas, Dakota and Scott. So, looking at of children living in District one ninety-one, at least seventy percent will attend District one ninety-one schools for kindergarten. And we need to determine what that capture rate is. As you know, with the pandemic, the birth rate was lower the last two years. And so, to really look at the demographic data of the cities as well as the counties and seeing where that movement is about, what is our actual market share? So, that's still work and research to be done.
One thing if I can add just before you move on, you'll notice hopefully that these two goals kind of align to what we talked about in terms of reputation and experience. A cohort staying with us from year to year is really about, are they having a good experience? And are people choosing to enroll their students here that live in the district? That's hopefully, again, a reputation thing. They feel confident they can send their children to our schools.
And so, the last bit of information we'd like to share with you is a recap of some strategies to support the enrollment goals. As Erin mentioned, enrollment really hits each of the four strategic directions. So, first and foremost is implementing the strategic roadmap that the board approved, particularly looking at our pre-K-12 pathways. We are in the development and on track for the profile of learner. As you just heard from Director Oftedal, the World's Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration Plans, once we present that dashboard, the metrics in January to monitor and report, and also that part about communications and engagement of our families and our community members. Do they know the work we're doing? Are we getting feedback from them about what we should celebrate? What areas we need to improve upon? And so, really, communications and engagement, sharing our story, getting feedback, and getting better based on that feedback. Continuing the brand, virtual academy and general enrollment. Build and implement on the annual middle school-specific campaign. If you remember, research, we do, a trend was losing those students from fifth grade to sixth grade. And we actually had a focus group for middle school parents during our strategic planning. New materials, web improvements, looking at all of the development within our three cities, engaging new residents, looking at that housing data. And then, something we launched this year, based on previous survey results and feedback, our community, our parents told us they really rely on our staff, especially teachers, to learn about our district. And so, we are giving them concrete tools, information to use so they can be the ambassadors we know that our community respects and values. And with that, did you have anything else to add, Erin?
That's it.
With that, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, our new book, Jamie. So, one of the ways, the communication and engagement, we have a new brochure. Thank you, Director Said, for talking about that spark. To summarize what you heard from our middle school principals, our teachers, and our students, and so, just community to really capture what we're doing, the work we're doing, please look for some of these new brochures and contact us if you have questions. Want to say anything else, Erin, about?
No, that's one project certainly that we're excited to see in print. It's always a nice when something comes out physical that you can put your hands on. So, much of the work we do is electronic nowadays, so that is kind of a fun thing. And we were able to share, they came in right when we were finishing up, or as we were starting, actually, the Realtor Forum two Mondays ago. So, we were able to get them over to the high school and hand them out to the Realtors who were there, about sixty Realtors, which was really great. Another thing that was mentioned in here that we're launching right now is a new microsite that's just around pathways. It's kind of a home base for our pathways-related and other enrollment-related marketing campaigns. And so, we'd had a pathway site, but we're integrating it into our own site and building it out a little bit more fully and concretely. So, we're excited about that work as well.
Thank you so much. This is really cool. Other comments, questions?
I'm just curious, Erin, you mentioned the exit surveys. Any ideas on how that might happen as far as the outreach piece? Is it something that's being mailed out?
We're starting with the emailed survey. So, we'll get, basically, we'll do it about every month just as a batch. We won't be able to automate it, at least, I'm not sure of a way for us to automate it yet. If we find one, we'll certainly do that. But on a monthly basis, we'll reach out to any families that have enrolled out or left the district, really for any reason, and we'll send them this survey. And if it's just we moved out of the district, they can click that or ignore it. Probably a lot of people won't return it, but we'll send it to them once and send a reminder once. And hopefully, we'll hear from families about why they left the district. So, and we'll be asking them about what was the primary reason that they left so that we can get, you know, kind of a firm thing, actionable thing, and then ask them to go into some detail about what happened or what their experience was or what their choice was about.
Anytime in that, like I know the first time probably we'll go out in like email or paper format, but is there like another follow-up where they're actually talking to a person if we were to just reach out?
Yeah, we'll give the, so the survey won't ask them to submit their information unless they want to follow up. So, it'll, but if they do put that in, we'll follow up for sure so they can talk in person. We'll reach out to them if they ask for that. But yeah, it'll just, it'll be pushed out in email and, like I said, a reminder email if we don't hear back from them, and then that'll probably be the end of it. We don't want to obviously bother people either, so.
All right. Thank you, Erin.
Director?
Thank you, Chair Chester. So, one comment, love that the enrollment goals are smart. I think that's, you know, I love, you know, the tracking of, you know, gauging that cohort by a percentage, you know, the capture rate, which obviously would have to be in keeping with birth rates because we don't want to have an under-inflated or over-inflated expectation for ourselves if we know where birth rates are. One thought that came to, okay, one detailed question, going back to the dashboard. Is absenteeism going to be included in the dashboard, absenteeism rates for students?
Attendance rates?
Or, I mean, whether it's attendance or tardiness or, you know, generally not being in class when they need to be?
So, at this time, I would say we don't have enough information. We're waiting on the profile of learner because some other indicators may come from that. So, for example, if showing up consistently is one of the characteristics it may be, so that's a piece we need to review. In addition to you see the mandated ones, these we're pretty sure on, but there may be some that come out of the profile of a learner. And then, we don't want it to be unwieldy, where it's too much. We want to keep the focus, the main thing.
And I guess the only reason, and I'll be interested to see, you know, how that comes out because who knows what's going to come out in the process? But I, for one, do kind of, I do lend a lot of credence to the tracking of whether students are in the seats in the classroom. But, um, I for one do kind of, I do lend a lot of credence to the tracking of whether students are in the seats in the classroom or not. So however we go about doing that, you know, I think it'll be, it'll be informative. Slide five. Talking about the survey results from families, um, I think that'll be, you know, hopefully people will choose to, to respond to the, the surveys. We can't force that obviously. I would also suggest that there might be benefit to, um, including exit surveys for staff to see if there's some, what kind of theme between what we're hearing from our families versus what we're hearing from staff. Um, so that's, you know, just, just a thought. And then finally, and I know we're gonna be, you know, getting to this in, starting in December, but, um, again, reiterating the concern about the Virtual Academy and the low enrollment and how that translates into it being more costly. Um, as a school, you know, we closed other schools for having higher enrollment than Virtual Academy. So, um, you know, as part of the budget process, I would just ask that, you know, we're gonna be intentionally looking at that and trying to figure out, how can we massage it? We obviously want to keep it, but how do we, what's the next iteration of Virtual Academy so that it isn't a drain on the system?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Um, next we will have, um, committee reports, um, and board appointment reports and school assignment reports. So let's start with policy. With our chair not here, uh, would a member of the policy committee like to make a report?
I, we haven't met this week. We're meeting next week. And that's all I have.
More to come next month?
More to come.
Yeah, that's right, because this board meeting is a week earlier than typical. So Legislative hasn't met yet either.
Same story.
And do we have anything ready to report from negotiations?
We do not have a negotiations report.
Well, that takes care of our committees. Any board appointments, reports? Go ahead, Director.
The annual MSBA delegate assembly is coming up on December second and third. And for the first time since I've been representing one ninety-one, the delegate assembly, it's gonna actually be in person this year instead of on Zoom. So looking forward to actually seeing what it's like in person. Um, earlier this week, I participated in a pre-meeting via Zoom where MSBA staff presented this year's proposals that have been submitted by school board members from around the state. The delegate assembly will vote on these proposals at the, um, in a couple of weeks at the assembly, which will then inform MSBA's legislative advocacy efforts for the coming year. Some of the, I think it was eighteen proposals that are being considered include changes to the state funding formula for education, increased access to mental health resources, request to fully fund any state mandated requirements, expanding computer science curriculum opportunities across the state, and reaffirming the autonomy of local school boards to make decisions in the best interest of their schools and their communities. So that is coming up in a couple of weeks, and that concludes my report. Suppose we'll have more of an update next month afterwards.
Great. I think, oh, nine seventeen, um, yes, so they, we had some really great, we had students talking with that about too. So that was really great hearing from, um, two of our sites with our, our students in, um, the alternative learning settings. Um, so that was really great. Again, the biggest conversation there is the, their, what their selves are, their options for declining enrollment. They're not declining enrollment, staffing issues and wait lists. Um, and so, um, they have, I think it's coming to the December board meeting, maybe? What they are going to be doing, recommending for options, which then would bring back here to know kind of what they're thinking and if we need, what we need to do now from what we learned from them, so. I was kind of muddled, but. So that's kind of what's happening with nine seventeen. Um, nine seventeen's board meeting is the same night we're planning to have a special meeting ourselves. And so I may not be in attendance at nine seventeen's meeting. So that includes my report for nine seventeen. Um, any other reports, nothing? Okay. So, um, that concludes the information portion of our meeting. We'll now move on to the business portion and, uh, with the consent, it's starting with the consent agenda. Um, although a board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Uh, do I have a motion, um, to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Or wait, no, sorry, no, is it, is it, that's right? Or is there any issue? Okay. Is, oh, is this, do a board members have anything they wish to remove? No, okay, now we have a motion by Director Said to approve the second, to approve this consent agenda. We have a second by Director Alt. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, motion carries unanimously. This is when I don't go off, when I go off script. Um, now we will move to new business. Uh, we will, we're being asked to approve the FY twenty-two audit. We have Stacy Silvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services.
Good evening Chair Chester, Dr. Battle, members of the board. Uh, last week at our board meeting, uh, following the board meeting during the workshop, you did receive a, a full report from our auditor. Michelle Hoffman and, uh, and our finance director, Tyler Denny, um, outlining our audit results. This week bringing to you the recommendation that the Board of Education approve the financial audit report for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Do I have a motion to approve the, um, the recommendation? Moved by Director Hume?
Second.
Second by Director Said. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Keeping with Stacy Silvine, uh, we are asked to adopt a resolution canvassing returns of votes of school district general election.
As we have, um, following the, the, the election back, uh, early November, the school board, uh, does need to canvass the results of the election between the third and the tenth day following the election, which, uh, places that between November eleventh and November eighteenth. Uh, then at that point, we will notify the county auditor of each county in which the school district is located in whole or in part of the results of the general election. Uh, so this is required by law, and it is my recommendation that the Board of Education adopts a resolution canvassing returns of votes of school district general election.
Do I have a motion to approve this recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt?
Second.
Second by Director Said. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Next we are being asked to adopt a resolution authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing the school district clerk to perform other elected related duties. Yeah, with Stacy Silvine, Director, Executive Director of Administrative Services.
And, um, that is my recommendation, by the way.
So just word for word.
That the Board of Education adopts a resolution to adopt a resolution authorizing issuance or of certificates of election and directing the school district clerk to perform other election related duties.
Do I have a motion to approve this recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume?
Second.
Second by Director Said. All those in favor, or wait, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Uh, now, um, having heard the legislative platform, we are being asked to approve the, for the twenty twenty-three legislative platform. Vice Chair.
I recommend that we approve the twenty twenty-three legislative platform.
Great, do I have a mo, uh, it's up to you too. Do I have a motion to approve this recommendation? Motion made by Director Said.
Second.
By Director Alt. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Um, great, and that concludes our regular scheduled meeting of the ISD one, ISD one ninety-one Board of Education. We are adjourned.
Okay, we need signatures from all of you.